And they're going to be awarded this on May sixteenth or eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
May eighteenth in Portland. But I included for you in your packet, the, the letters identifying what these two offices have done.
Okay. I thought they wouldn't be here, but.
No, not, we didn't plan on them being here tonight. We can do another ceremony later on, but we are going down and made to accept it. And there was two cases that were very, very dangerous. Um, one was a tourniquet case of someone that'd been shot, um, actually saved the guy from bleeding out. Another one was a lady hanging from the railing on the bridge, literally with no feet, so. Two well-deserved cases.
Thank you. Next is consider minutes of previous meetings. First is town council minutes from four thirteen twenty twenty-three. We have council budget minute, meeting minutes from four thirteen twenty twenty-three. And council budget meeting minutes from four twenty twenty-three. Have the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Uh, correspondence, we have two, uh, Verona police calls, one on four seven twenty twenty-three and one on four fifteen twenty twenty-three. Uh, again, those were in your packet. Have no ordinances to consider. First, um, next is discussion items. First is Betty French requests to discuss eighteen sixty-one state route forty-six.
Betty came to see me last Thursday, um, and asked for an opportunity, actually as if I had, um, the ability to make any changes in, uh, foreclosure and eviction that we've done at eighteen sixty-one state route forty-six. And I don't have that authority. The council, this is a foreclosure, the council has issued, um, the information on this. And so I told her that since I have, I don't have the authority to do that, it would be up to the council if they wanted to listen to, um, any reasons why you shouldn't move forward with this. And she's here this evening if she wants to come up and.
I appreciate you talking to me, by the way, the other day. That made, uh, I mean, better understanding for me, since I haven't been able to really do that. And I understand exactly how probably all of you guys feel right now. And I have honestly, I don't want to sit here and give you a hundred different excuses because that's not why I'm here. But I could sit here and tell you, you know, all night, you know, all the horrible stories of my life, but most of you probably already know most of them. But regardless, you know, I wanted to come here to maybe ask for a chance, a one chance for me, myself, to be able to do this, you know, with. I've had a long history with Keith and I talked to you about that the other day and I appreciate you listening and talk to me about that also, because it's obviously hard. But I am now, you know, really trying to work really hard to improve my life, to get it to where I want it by myself. And this is one of my, you know, goals and things that I want to prove to myself for, you know, for the town, for my kids, for me, to do. And I'm, you know, just here begging for one chance, even if we have to set boundaries and timelines and things that need to be done by certain times. You know, and if that stuff can't be fulfilled, or I'm not gonna make.
Those things have already been set and done.
I understand. I understand that.
So, that, that, I, I appreciate you wanting to come in here, um, but I'm gonna stop you right there. Those things have been done unless somebody from the council has anything further. Um, this decision has gone on for, most of the time I've been on the council for nine years. And there's been zero, absolutely zero done to mitigate the problem that we've had out there. So, as far as I'm concerned, the chances have already come and gone.
Okay.
I, I'll go around the council. I mean, I'm, anybody else have any other comments or questions?
No.
Does anybody feel any different? This has been discussed ad nauseam by us and chances have been given. And, and, uh, you know.
We'd be setting a bad precedent.
I understand what you're saying.
So, as far as, as far as we're concerned, the, the order stands.
Right. I understand what you're saying and I just, you know, I figured where, you know, I'm trying to get my life together and, you know, figure out who I am and what I want to do.
And I hope you do, but it doesn't, it's not gonna include that, that piece of property out there as far as, as far as this council is concerned.
Okay.
Okay?
So, I appreciate you giving me a chance to.
Thank you. Next is an update from the finance committee on today. Who's the finance committee?
That would be me. Uh, yes, the, um, on the finance committee meeting this evening, uh, we heard from Andy Osborne, uh, who heads the, um, the snowmobile club here in town, uh, requesting, um, the consideration of a purchase of, uh, UTV or a side-by-side in order to groom the sixty miles of snowmobile trails, um, between Bucksport and Orland. Uh, approximately fifty miles of those are here in Bucksport. Um, and we submitted, um, paperwork from friend and friend detailing that request. Um, and the request was for the amount of, I've said it behind me and I'm not gonna, but it was for just around twenty-five thousand dollars, um, for the town to consider. Um, and the committee is recommending that we consider that at our next meeting.
And that was from ARPA funds?
That was from ARPA funds, yes.
Questions? Everybody okay with that going on to the next, next council meeting? All right, next is the services committee.
We appointed Jacob Grand Mason as, uh, on the appeals board to send the council for appointment. And Sherry Billings from Habitat for Humanity, they're doing a safety and accessibility repair program, which I believe has been in the works for quite some time, correct? So they'd be looking to potentially first year, maybe twenty jobs in the Bucksport area. Possibly a five hundred dollar per job cap, which, so they'd be looking between ten, fifteen thousand from the town. We suggest send it to next meeting to discuss.
And there's also ARPA funds, would, would fund that?
Yes.
Good. Any questions on that?
It, it was a pilot pro, Habitat hasn't done this in Hancock County and, um, Bucksport was looking for a program. And so they, they have the volunteers and the supervision and those kind of things in order to make it work, so.
Yeah, sure.
Certainly sounds like a well-deserved project for us to get behind, so.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll send that to the council. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Um, and then you, you had a recommendation for Mr. Grand Mason, I believe it was?
Yes, for the Board of Appeals.
Okay, and we'll put that on the next council meeting?
That's on this one.
That's on this one here. It's on, it's coming out, okay? Uh, next is the infrastructure committee meeting.
Yeah, at infrastructure, we discussed a request from the senior center for an air filtration system. And, uh, where we ended up with that was hopes of getting a few more numbers or a better understanding of what that would be. Continue the discussion.
So, we're gonna work with, um, Mr. Foster and we'll get that, some better information. Okay, perfect. Any questions on that? All right, next, um, agenda items. Item A has been tabled. Item B is resolve twenty twenty-three fifty-one to approve the sewer commitment for the January first twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first twenty twenty-three quarter in the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
There is a, there's a supplemental, the, there was a second resolve that went out on this. There was one supplemental bill that added seven hundred and thirty some odd dollars to that commitment. So there's actually two, but there, it is the sewer commitment for this quarter, so.
So the, the one that you sent out yesterday, I, when I was looking at that, I didn't notice. So we have resolve.
It's the same resolve number. It makes the commitments and the total adds in that.
Oh, okay, it's the same, everything's the same though, with a supplemental commitment of seven hundred and six dollars and four cents. So with that additional information, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Next is resolve twenty twenty-three fifty-two to approve amending the town manager's contract. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Questions? Everybody has the information? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Oh, look, Jacob Grand Mason, appointment to the appeals board. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Item ten is approval of quick claims, discharges, and Ds. We have none. Item eleven is the town manager report.
Um, our congratulations go out to the Bucksport High School robotics team for its amazing third place finish at the World Robotics Championships in Houston this past week. To be one of the six hundred and twenty teams that made it to the Worlds is an incredible accomplishment out of the more than three thousand teams worldwide. To best seventy-eight teams in their division at Worlds to advance as one of the eight teams to the finals is a reflection of their hard work and dedication, their wonderful coaches, and the support of the RSU and the community in general. In addition, they won the Engineering Excellence Award at the World Championships. Indeed, this group has helped put Bucksport even more on the map in a very good way.
Just real quick, so I'd like to give a round of applause for those kids.
As a note, I, I went out when they arrived the other night up to the gym and they were happy, but boy, were they exhausted. We plan on starting our Courtesy Boat Inspection Program the last weekend of May. We are looking for more people who might be interested in assisting with this program. Hours will be available on Saturdays and Sundays through the summer. Training is available and inspectors will be paid fourteen dollars an hour. Applications for this can be picked up at the town office. I am also pleased to report that we have been notified by Senator Collins' office that the four point one million dollar for the town dock project has been included in the draft of the twenty twenty-four HUD bill. There was a long way to go in this process, but we are at least in the door for consideration. And she's notified us that she'll keep us apprised of our progress. We also received an email today that from Mobility Works, and according to them, it will be, that our bus will be ready next week for the senior center and they will call to arrange for pickup, which is really good news for the center. We have not yet been served on the federal suit filed by the motel owner of the Spring Fountain, but we were notified today that the property is under contract to a real estate investment firm located in Portland. For paving, we have the opportunity to have the same paving prices last year if we contract with Thibodeau and have paving done in May before they get involved with their state projects. They have been low bidder for many years here and this would allow us to keep the same rate and get paving done earlier. We have the majority of the paving budget for twenty-two, twenty, for twenty-two, twenty-three available to do it in this fiscal year as well. The Central Street project, which involves both sewer and water, um, up until this point, that work has been water work. The sewer portion of it will start on Tuesday of next week. It was supposed to be Monday, but that looks like not to be such a good weather day for digging in the dirt. At the Bucksport Area Service Network meeting this morning, we discussed ways to raise awareness of not only drug addiction issues in our community, but the resources that are available to help people who are using and their families and how to discuss, to access these resources. Bucksport Public Safety will be organizing a community forum to discuss these topics and to have representatives from resource agencies, public safety, the recovering community, and others on hand to provide information. More details to come. Holmes Annual Meeting. The annual meeting from Holmes is being held at Brown Hall adjacent to the Elm Street Congregational Church on Thursday, May fourth from five thirty to seven thirty P M. I serve on that board and was asked to be the speaker for the event to discuss the partnership that Bucksport and Holmes share to help our less fortunate residents. However, that evening is scheduled as a budget review meeting. Is the council willing to take that Thursday off and have the review on the eleventh? And if not, I will make my regrets to Holmes. And finally, I'm happy to report that the tanker rehab project approved in twenty twenty-one has now moved from the completed chassis phase to the next stage and we may actually get the vehicle within the next few months.
Are you looking for an answer on the fourth?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think we, we have to keep our agenda at the fourth. That's a pretty important meeting, so. All right, where are we? Don't mind me, folks, first time doing this. I'm just trying to get back where I'm supposed to be. Uh, next is item twelve, uh, approval of permits. We have Bucksport Pride Festival Permit, June eighteenth twenty twenty-three. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Item thirteen is discussion of items not on the agenda for the council, the public. Anybody from the public have anything? Rich, yeah, come on in.
I need to apologize. I had made a mistake. I would like to know if we can take up an item that's not on the agenda. Um, I was supposed to let the town manager know that, um, we were looking for an extension of the downtown district, uh, exterior improvement grant to have that deadline submitted to the fifteenth of June due to the weather, um, and with painting. And, and I completely dropped the ball on that, so I apologize.
Take a motion for item not on the agenda?
So moved. Second.
How would the council like to proceed on Rich's request?
Motion approved.
Oh, we are, yeah, any questions? Again, my first time doing this, sorry. All those in favor? Opposed? You're all set. Thank you.
We also have, I, it was at UFC, the Central Main Tower application that came, permit that came in after the agenda was out.
Okay.
These generally, they require council approval, but we didn't always include them on every agenda. They were, they were at the dais and we came to meetings, but, um, if we could take up that one as well so that this CMP permit isn't held up.
Motion to take up the CMP permit?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Any other discussion items from the public? Anybody? What's that, any signatures?
On that one?
On this one that I have?
Yep.
I'm just dropping the ball here. It's a lot. It's a lot. It is. Anybody from the council have anything that's not on the agenda? All right, item fourteen is upcoming public hearings or committee assignments, um. Peter, I was looking for a regulatory review to discuss, uh, review permitted uses for Main Street storefronts.
And could we also add the land bill, the solid waste facility licensing ordinance that we have the moratorium right now that we're?
And Rich, were you gonna get in touch with Mr. York to see, I, I guess Andy said he couldn't, you talked to him, he couldn't be here? So we may have to push that one off until the last one in May.
Okay.
Um, it's pretty packed up going forward here, so talk to him about the.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay? And then you can get back to Sue if it's on there. We can schedule it next meeting. All right, um, I think we got that all set. Next item is budgets. First is, I'm just going down.
From the list that's on that.
From the list that's, oh, do you have up here or you want me to take this?
That one right there.
Yep, recreation. Sue, did you need this other part of the CMP? Probably. Is that one of the revised ones or not? That goes with the CMP stuff.
We've been in the September, October range because they do their state contracts. But if we can do it now, we can get it done before the summer starts.
Everybody okay with that?
Roads are all dried up enough. Nothing's posted in.
Yeah, it's more than one week ago. Oh, good.
What was the second item on regulatory review? Main Street storefront and lots?
Sewer, I mean.
Solid waste facility licensing ordinance that we have the moratorium right now that we're?
And Rich, were you gonna get in touch with Mr. York to see, I, I guess Andy said he couldn't, you talked to him, he couldn't be here? So we may have to push that one off until the last one in May.
Okay.
Um, it's pretty packed up going forward here, so talk to him about the.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay? And then you can get back to Sue if it's on there. We can schedule it next meeting. All right, um, I think we got that all set. Next item is budgets. First is, I'm just going down.
From the list that's on that.
From the list that's, oh, do you have up here or you want me to take this?
That one right there.
Yep, recreation. Sue, did you need this other part of the CMP?
Probably. Is that one of the revised ones or not?
That goes with the CMP stuff. No, I don't think so.
So the, uh, recreation budget includes our senior center director, director. The, it says swimming pool payroll. That's the Y contract overall, which includes the swimming pool payroll and the other Y services that we receive. The part-time assistance item is, at the time the town, um, converted from its own two-person recreation department to contracting with the Y, um, Mr. Emery had, uh, retired and the other person in that department, um, was retained, but we contracted her to RSU twenty-five as a social worker and they paid for, um, her wages and benefits. So that, we did that so that we, we didn't, we didn't, nobody lost a job, but we found another income stream to do this and she's doing a really good job as a social worker in the school system. So that's really what that is. The, uh, rent item at the bottom is the rent that the town pays annually to Stanford Management for the senior center. The, um, heating fuel line item, which you'll notice wasn't there before, is, is a cost that we've taken on due to the contract request from that entity. We have not paid for the twenty years of heating fuel. We didn't, um, do then, what that heating fuel is, is propane for the use of the kitchen where the meals are prepared. The, uh, what else is, the building, uh, maintenance and repair, uh, is, you know, things that are done, uh, within our own recreation facilities. The, um, program supplies at, at eighty-six fifty includes the cost of, uh, cleaning, uh, at the senior center, which is done three times a week. Um, so, uh, other than that, the, the, the changes include the increase in the Y's contract, which is driven by the same pressures that we have, which is personnel and wages. And, um, the senior center director, which is at, um, twenty-five hours a week, um, as opposed to twenty hours a week because of the amount of time that he's devoting to that, um, facility. So that is, um, there are very few other changes on that thing. Um, Matt McGinnis, who is the Bucksport Y Director, is sick this evening or he would have been here to discuss this with you as well.
Questions? Next is waterfront.
Good evening. Um, you can see up on the proposed budget there, looking at slight increase again, um, facility maintenance personnel. I've got employees who are under the new minimum wage that have to, uh, that were bumped up to the thing to be at this, this year. So to get that included for us, um, supplies, supply and demand, costs have gone up on facility supplies as well. But other than that, I'm not sure what you have for numbers there, but as of today, we're at seventy-four percent expended and we've got the crane coming next week, so that'll really eat up pretty much what's left there. Um, this year's salary is gonna come a little under because two of the workers, um, had the honor of attending Boy State for one week. And then they also had the engineering, uh, honor up at Humane for a week as well. So we went two weeks where it was just Mr. Russell and I grabbed a bunch of high school volunteers to work in their place, um, to make up for lost hours.
Questions?
What was your, Mark, you've expended up to this point?
Uh, we have expended, uh, seventy-four percent. Uh, that's, um, as of today, the twenty-seventh. I, I believe the figures you're looking for are March ninth?
Yep.
Yeah. So, uh, the, the difference there, Jim, is Ron's back now, um, to full-time, um, as well as it's spring season, so all the spring supplies have to be ordered and, and both bathrooms are open. Um, actually, you don't see that on the air because I haven't gotten that bill. So it's actually, we're gonna be closer to about eighty, eighty-five percent by the time this month ends.
Any other questions? All right, um, next is the marina. I think the only thing that really stands out there, one of the things is the fuel, cost of goods sold, gasoline. That's just indicative of the price that we're gonna have to pay.
Yeah.
And, and the revenue side of the budget.
Can you balance that out?
Balances that out because we sell the product for a bit more than we buy it for in order to, um, help with our cost of operation and staff and those kind of things. But it's still advantageous for voters to get it from us because other marinas are charging far more for a product like that.
On the bottom, Rich, there's a line that says float replacement twenty thousand. Is that outside of, right on the very bottom? I don't know if you can see it.
Oh, float replacement.
Yeah, does that carry over to, to page two, Sue?
I, I did that because the council had already approved the replacement of the floats.
Right.
At the marina, so I moved that because you've already done that approval. It's not in here because it's not a regular operational item.
So it's just a shown number that's already?
That, that was just a number that was.
Okay.
Included that didn't, wasn't necessary in the operating budget because of other actions that the council had taken for float replacements.
So generally, this budget is, to use, is a wash and that twenty thousand dollars would be outside of that, that normal wash? Okay, yeah, makes sense. Yep, thank you.
But we exceeded on the float maintenance this past year, this past round, right?
You're talking about the current budget?
Yeah.
Floating facility maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, we had.
A bunch of damage.
We had some bad storms again.
The storms beat, beat them up.
So other, other than weather though, the general shape's gonna be okay to maintain?
Well, once the last set gets built, everything's gonna be brand new with the oldest floats being two thousand and twenty. And the last floats lasted us twenty-five years, so when you go to claim insurance on it, they'd depreciate it.
Yeah.
So we were lucky to get, we were lucky to get money last year's for the damage of some of those twenty-five-plus-year boats. Uh, we still have a long waiting list of people trying to get into our marina. But no expansion is possible until the remaining floats are new. And then we'll talk about expansion at that point.
Rich, do you have ballpark figures to how many people are on that waiting list? And if you don't, that's.
I, I don't have an honest answer for you. I know it's two pages long.
Okay, all right, so it's not four, all right.
No.
Yeah, no.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, general government. The first would be administration.
There it is. It's, uh, you had, uh, an updated one for administration at your, and that's because when I did the budget, I, I didn't. One of my front office people, I, I had the wrong wages in for her and had not given her the raise that everybody else got, so I changed that. It's not in the, this version is the one you've gotten originally, but you have at your seats the one that adds approximately a thousand dollars or, or a little more to the office staff salary. Um, this, uh, budget reflects, uh, front office, um, our main municipal dues, the general legal cost for the town. Um, the, the IT software contract is located in this budget, um, under, um, software support. Um, that line item is, uh, reflects our IT contract with RSU twenty-five, as well as the, the contract for Trio, which is our software, which is used. Across all of our, uh, departments with the exception of code enforcement, which, th- their, their code program isn't something we purchased, it's not. Very user-friendly. Um, the audit is here, and that's audit for all town operations with the exception of the marina and the sewer sys, the sewer department. Um.
I would, um, make a request, and, and I know we've talked about it in the past, but I think it's time to look at, um, council salaries, council payment. Um, I would make a proposal that each of those go up by ten dollars based on the positions there. Cost of fuel, time, and all those things that adds up. I, I don't believe we've ever hit thirty meetings in the course of a year. We, we usually end up with November, December being one meeting. Um, I think it's, um, I think it's time for folks on the council, and I would have this take effect with, after the next election. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have it, um. Be part of this council here, but I'd make a recommendation that, um, we look at raising those up for maybe ten dollars a, a meeting or something. So.
Okay, I'll incorporate that, but it would be from, um, January on.
Yep, January twenty-four is what I would look at.
That.
And that way, it, you know, the new council coming in would be, we, we've all, we've all taken the oath that we'll take this one here, but next council coming in can maybe see the.
I think this was set in eighty-nine or something.
I'm pretty sure it was, yeah, yeah. And then again, I don't think that they would, uh, I, I say it, not, not, not. Putting it any less, but, you know, probably fifteen hundred dollars or something is what it would amount to over the course of the, of the year, so. Any other questions on this one? Next is planning CEO. Again, when I think you look at this budget, um. Cost for, um, wages is increased, and then we have the codification of the ordinances is the big increase on that, so.
It is, and I, I wanted to take a, just a minute to explain what the purpose of that is.
Yep.
Um. Our ordinances are. Not terribly user-friendly and difficult. To both administer and for our residents to sort of find and figure out. And our code officer, um, Mr. Cavelli, has done a good deal of research on, um. What the process of codifying, which i- involves a legal review of your ordinances to ensure that what you're trying to do is actually legal. 'Cause some things, sometimes ordinances are passed or things happen and then laws change, and the ordinances don't catch up with those kind of things. That kind of review, but then it's also organizes them in a, such a way that, um. It's easier for people to find what they're looking for and online, they're searchable by words and topics and all sorts of things, so if you wanna find something, it's easier to find. And, um, this isn't a, this initial nine thousand is to, to do that process with all of our ordinances and. And then there's an, uh, an, an annual fee, not nine thousand dollars, to update any updates that, any changes you make during a year. They will update into the codification for you on an annual basis. You could have it done as often as you wanted, but I think annually would certainly be sufficient, given that we're, we're not changing them every twelve minutes. Uh, Mr. Cavelli and I had talked about this at length, and I, I really think it would be in the best interest of the community to at least consider this, um. Getting this done. Uh, our, our ordinance is, in particular, our zoning ordinance is, um, somewhat of a.
Would we see, would we see this accomplished? How, what's the timeline on that?
It takes approximately eighteen to twenty months.
So, is this nine thousand cover that?
It's half, half this year and half next.
So, we'd come back at next budget for the other half, and then that would, and then there would be an ongoing fee on top of that, or?
The ongoing fee is like twelve hundred dollars a year for them to host it and update it once a year, and, um. Once it's up there, you can search it, print it, um, it's very user-friendly for, for the citizens to be able to find what they're looking for.
Is, is there an example out there of another town that has it that, I mean?
Would you like to see one?
Yeah, I mean, if you would just say what, what a town, or, or send, send us an email, just, I'd just like to see what, how, how it works. Um, I, I don't, I think it's a absolutely, wait, again, a lot of things have been the way they've been just because that's the way they've been.
Sure, and all this company is the one that Belfast and Camden, Bangor Brewer, um, a lot of the, a lot of the bigger communities around here are using, it's called E codes three sixty.
Yeah, that went over my head, but that's okay.
Is it fair to say this is gonna be the?
For some of the.
Is this like an upgrade like we did with the GIS for the tags map system? This is, isn't gonna carry that much weight?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Yeah, I, that's where I guess I was looking at is.
Yeah.
This isn't just a thing.
No, this is a, it's a big upgrade for the, for the community.
Okay, yeah, i- if you could send a link, Sue, just, I'd be curious, just to, like.
I'll just, I can wait to finish. Nope, nope, I was gonna add, uh, should we reconsider the planning board salaries, you know, that are at twenty bucks and probably have been there for, since nineteen eighty-nine.
There's nobody from the planning board here, so I.
Sorry. No, I. We're having trouble getting the planning board people there. It's not the worst thing to make.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, in looking at theirs, um, you know, if, if you look at, and, and keep it at scale, if you go those up five bucks a, a deal.
Yeah, just something to reflect.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, thank you, I, I, I literally.
We would have been caught off at any.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, is everybody okay with, with that request? Is everybody okay with the codification request and?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Okay. Um, next is the assessor slash assistant plumbing inspector.
Um, our assessor, um, took the course and certificat, got certified in order to be able to, um, back up. Uh, plumbing inspector when Mr. Cavelli is not available.
No pun intended. I had.
Of course, of course.
I couldn't let it go, I'm sorry, I had it, yep.
Um, the, uh, the. There is a document scanning line item in this, uh, budget that is related to, um, our code officer has had that in his, um, budget for the past couple of years. For some assistance in getting the town's documents digitized, scanned into our system, and, uh, our assessing records need that same. Kind of work, and there's two thousand dollars in here for assistance in that, the scanning of those records.
And I'll ask again, is that a one-time deal, or is that, will that cover what you need, or?
Um, I'm not sure, so I know Luke has it again for this year as well. Um, the hope is to have everything scanned in and then attached to the GIS so that you can look at a property and see all of the. Permits and all of the historical data attached to that property, um, right at your fingertips. So, I don't know if they have the time or if that budget would allow for them to do that all in one year. It's kind of like a trial this year to see how much they can get done in that amount of time.
But it, but as, as our assessor said, it, the goal is to attach it to our GIS so that when you click, you get.
It's one click and then you can go from there.
You can get everything when you, um, utilize the GIS on the front page of our website, which is literally one of the most popular things that anybody does with our website is. Use that GIS, so.
And the, the, the salary increase is reflective of the plum, the assistant plumbing inspector job?
That and the, the fees to get her to comparable, which we did over two years.
Yep. Remember talking about that. Questions? Next is municipal building. Again, when you look at this budget, the increases are minimal, mostly for the fuel and the electricity more than anything else. Supplies have gone, everything, you know, the things that have gone up have gone up and.
And the, um, water, it says water and sewer. We don't, the, the town doesn't pay a sewer bill for its own building, with its own system. But the water is going up as I, as I told you, there's a ten percent rate increase that will be, is going to the PUC. That they're looking to get that to September one, so one quarter's it, two quarters, that, what would be the new?
Questions on that? Blue?
Um, pre-COVID, let me come up with that.
Please.
Uh, pre-COVID, we had, um, you probably remember this, we did, uh, I did, put together a.
I can't remember the stuff I was supposed to do twenty minutes ago.
I put together a water savings plan, um, where we would upgrade the fixtures, 'cause a lot of the fixtures at the public safety building and this building were, are ancient. Um, still five gallons of flush for the men's room. Um, and that was all set to happen, and then COVID hit, and nobody was allowed in the building. And then the prices of everything changed, and so none of those quotes are good anymore, and I don't know, I, I'm sure you guys are probably still for doing that, but I don't know if that's been accounted for in the budget.
So, in the CIP, I assume, is that?
It would, it would be under town office and public safety in the CIP, and it's not right now, it, I mean, it doesn't mean it can't be.
Well, there's something I'd like to add as well, um, and that is, uh, we run the, the furnace all summer long, just for hot water, for those couple of lavatories things. In the bathrooms, in the kitchen, and that's silly.
You're gonna heat, you're talking a heat pump water heater?
Either a heat pump water heater or an instantaneous, just for, you know, for cost savings, rather than running that furnace all summer long. Um, we could shut that down.
It'd always be a wash, but maybe, or we get to a point where it'd be a wash, maybe the savings-wise.
The cost of doing it would, would be a wash, I would think, pretty quickly.
Two or three years, I bet.
And.
The heat pump hybrid ones.
What I can do is, um, Mr. Cavelli and I can discuss this.
Yep.
And I, when, are you meeting on the fourth, you can have some numbers for that in the CIP.
Yeah, 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 I mean, we have, we have fairly good balances on the CIP for this building that I think we could look at, so.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Nobody can hear me. Next, um. Insurances and benefits. Again, any questions on those? Um, a lot of these are tied into contractual agreements and cost of doing business with the federal government.
All good. Is it though?
Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have that in this book? This thing?
Workers' call? I mean, the, 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 um.
Do you search it in the map?
I think so.
I think it was even under, it's on today's.
Fifth, fifth green tab, Ben.
Green?
Yep.
Have no green tabs.
Oh, anyway, I'll wait back in. Thank you.
Any questions?
That's kinda out of our hands, that part.
A little bit is, yep. Um, contingency is the next one.
Contingency is, um, the. Actually, the, pretty much the thousand dollars a month that's budgeted for things that don't fit anywhere else, and what they've done in the past couple of years is. Pay for legal fees for the spring fountain. It's been a big part of what those expenses have incurred, um, that isn't what it was designed to do, but those fees are outside of, um. A normal, you know, our, our regular legal fees budget isn't to accommodate the fact that we're in a, a legal appeal, and so contingency has been used that way primarily. But it is the, the one thing on a town basis, which is for things that don't quite fit into another category, or you need to highlight. Um, for audit purposes so that they can treat them properly.
Questions on that?
I would note that's a thousand dollars a, a month out of, out of an eight million dollar budget.
Yep.
So, it's, it's not a huge amount.
Next is, uh, public access channel, no changes in that?
Yeah, the public access channel is the, um, our, the person in the closet in the back room who's videoing, creating this magic. Um, is, does it as part of the contract we have with RSU twenty-five for IT services, and the only time that wages are paid outside of that is when. It's not a, a, a council committee or planning board meeting, if it was some other kind of thing that we were doing, so. That's kind of very good. And, uh, um, the other fee in that is the, I didn't even open it up. I thought about it, um, is the, um. Hosting fee for our, our access to the, to video streaming that we have. Um, Town Hall Streams is where that is right now. That's, it's a, going to be, it's a different one now, as of Monday. That's, it's a, going to be, it's a different one now as of Monday.
And Friday?
Friday. It's a different one as of that. We had moved to Granicus from, um, Town Hall Streams, but that's the video streaming, the things that now allow, um, Jacob to do minutes from our minutes and for people, things to be searchable in terms of in our meeting, all of that's part of that as well.
Questions? All right, uh, item eight is economic development.
To the initial economic development director budget, we have Mr. Rotella here.
So obviously the, the big increase here is salary.
Yes, there's two, uh, two increases. Uh, the big one is the, the salary. The second one is office supplies, which is a one-time. I started November 30th of 2015 and I really need a new computer. It's a laptop with docking station for $1,200 and $300 Microsoft license. Um, and the salary, um...
Oh, let Sue talk about the salary.
We can let Sue talk about the salary, that's good, okay.
Um, when we were going through, um, our salary reviews during our contract, negotiations with Public Safety, Police, Fire, Dispatch and Highway, um, those, we got those to comparables and we addressed, uh, code enforcement and his nine other hats. And we addressed assessing over a two-year period, this being the second year. Um, we didn't address economic development and, and Mr. Rotella and I had a conversation last year about, that he didn't, it wasn't my expectation that he had, he had to wait, but it was by choice that he said he would wait and do that in a second year. So I, um, checked salaries for economic development directors in, um, not using Bangor and Brewer, they're, they're much larger, but, um, Elsworth, Belfast, Hamden, um, trying to think, I've got a list of them. And, uh, the, Rich wears more hats than that in that he also is the department head that oversees the waterfront and the marina. And some other economic direct, development directors also have, um, additional responsibilities. But ninety thousand dollars was the middle of the pack. The, there was only one lower and it, and everybody else was higher. Um, I can't possibly tell you how valuable this position and all the hats that, that Mr. Rotella wears is to this community in terms of not just the fact that he's, never runs out of energy, it is that, um, just need to look at our success in terms of, of economic development since he's come to us. Um, but more than that, his community development, his ties to our school system. He acts as a, as a mentor, um, he has interns, he's, coaches our children, um, he's... And beyond that, he's in contact with, uh, making things happen that it, Rich did the application for our doc to, um, be included as a federal designated project. And, and has been right there every step of the way in getting it engineered and shovel-ready and permitting and all of those kind of things. And, um, it seems like he's everywhere all the time, but, uh, he's valuable. He's certainly proved his worth in the years that he's been with us. And we believe it's, that it's time that we fairly compensate him for the work that he's doing. And, um, I certainly hope he wants to continue to do on the highs.
Um, I know we had a question last week on non-municipal agency funding. Um, that got dropped down and there was a request to put that back in, right? Is that what the deal was?
Take one out of one category and bring it into...
Right, and I think that's that fifteen hundred dollars difference down there. Um, any thoughts on that?
I've got no issue with it.
The, the entities representing these are here this evening.
Yep, yeah, I was gonna get that in. All right, um, any questions on economic development?
No, just that I support everything the town manager said about Rich's position. That's a position that we've talked about for a while, is one that perhaps has been under, underfunded or whatever, or that we're certainly getting our, our value there. And I believe even with this increase, that we still are.
Yeah, we won't find anybody more committed to the town.
Yep.
And I'll throw a comment on there that, um, if that does go through, uh, that doesn't mean that the nine hats he does wear, that's not an empowerment scenario to let him wear thirteen. You know what I mean? Because that is economic development that still needs to, needs to happen, so.
If, if you were to ask Mr. Rotella how many times, and I might tell him to stop, it would be...
Do you listen to us when we tell you to stop?
That's different.
All right, if there's no further questions, um, we'll go on to item A, which is Main Street Bucksport. They have a funding request, um, for twenty thousand dollars. I believe Mr. Russell is gonna...
I am here.
You got, you escaped from Augusta?
I did, just came from there, had to leave early.
How you liking that so far?
I, I like it, you know? I kind of wish it was a bipartisan panel like you folks, but it's not, so learning to live with that. And I did put a letter by my name, so I guess I have to be a part of it, but... I, just as a continuation on, uh, a very valuable ex-officio member of our board, unpaid, I will say, is Rich Rotella, so he reaches far and wide into this community. And, uh, you got a gem there, so. Uh, anyway, um, we have a revised budget. I, hopefully you got a copy, I don't have a slide for that. I did ask, uh, Derek to make me some slides to make it easier than, uh, sort of reading something. So I can talk about, you know, some of the progress we've made as an organization and I'm happy to say there's been quite a bit of it. There's previous times we've been here, we had our struggles through the COVID years. And just to point out another official, Kathy Downs, I don't know how she did it looking at a screen and not talking to people when she was over there. It just seems impossible to me that you could have been effective and done that without, uh, you know, talking to people face-to-face and hearing what their views are and all of that. So great respect for her for getting the duty then. Anyway, if you have questions on the budget, I can either go through the presentation first or take questions. And I know when we came before Economic Development Committee, uh, we did our budget originally in the beginning of the year. It's a lot harder in January and February to be quite as positive as you are as you move along. And, uh, things have really, uh, gone progressively better. I think the organization's on sound footing. Uh, we've, uh, gotten back into the flow of events and making things happen. They've all been cash positive. I'm proud to say that our board, uh, did a match, you know, to try to raise some more funds to get there. That was both, uh, last year, the board has supported the organization to the two hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars, which, you know, is, it's regular folks, uh, doing work that they believe in. But anyway, uh, the budget reflects a much rosier picture. And what I would say is we have a number of grant applications out. So, uh, with, uh, some good fortune, this budget will be higher. Uh, we did get turned down by the Libra Foundation, but that just made us do a couple more. So hopefully there'll be, uh, we'll be back up to that sort of pre-pandemic sixty thousand dollar level that we are. But this budget, I feel very confident that this may be on the conservative side now with the way things are going, so. Hopefully you'll see this as a good investment. I know you have in the past and we greatly appreciate that. And especially appreciate the, uh, when the times were tough and you kept us going, so. And I would point out that the request doesn't have any built-in inflation, which is a big talk over there in Augusta these days.
Thank you for that.
But anyway, just if we can run through the slides, I'll sort of tell you what we've been up to and what's coming up and, uh, maybe get an idea of how... Well, first of all, this is our board now, it's a small in number, but we have a couple of more young folks that are coming on. So we're gonna try to build our board up to, I don't know what our capacity is. Do you know, John Paul? For a board number? I think it's a number. Eleven, so our goal is to get to that eleven. The more vibrant we can be, the more we can meet our mission, which is to make a vibrant downtown where things are happening. So there's our mission. I won't read it, but, uh, I think this is a, we're a member of the Main Street Program that's a national organization as well as through the Maine Downtown Center. So this is, uh, they're in many communities in Maine and they, they do lots of good work. If we could just have the next slide. So this is exciting, the, uh, the Bridge the Gap Race is coming back. We've almost got five hundred people registered so far. This is coming up in the next couple of weeks. Uh, and the organization has put together a little finish line festival. They're trying to keep those folks around and, uh, spending some money in town. I think we've talked about a lot, we have visions of what they've managed to do in Millinocket. So that's kind of a long-term goal for us, which is, I don't know if you know about their half marathon that they have, but it's impressive, the work they've done.
Ron, do you know the, the times of the, of the race, time of starts? The reason I, the reason I ask is because the academy is having graduation that, that day.
We, we kind of know that.
Yeah.
Some of that's going on, but it's still, the runners come from all over the state. There's a number of legislators that are coming to run in the race, but...
It's ten AM, so is your concern that they may be coming and, and get stopped and not make it to graduation?
Yes.
Late.
What time is graduation?
Eleven thirty. So...
Uh, it starts at ten o'clock, the bridge should be open by ten, fifteen, ten thirty, it's very...
I, I, I just, I just want to put a blurb out tomorrow then to the folks that may be coming next week just to be, maybe add an extra ten minutes to your travel or something.
Yeah, it was pretty good flow where they came across the road down at the, uh, before you went across the Bucksport Barone Bridge, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully that won't, we'll be cognizant of that. And I'm happy to...
Hopefully a lot of the folks from the graduation will come up to Bucksport afterwards.
Yeah, yeah, to, uh, take part in that. And we did, I think we've got part of Elm Street closed off, so it's sort of street celebration and... Um, so we did, uh, we had this, believe it or not, it was a, I think it was a spring event. It was really well-attended. I must, we brought our two dogs over and the dogs were all nice to each other. And it was a really kind of fun event. We walked through, uh, uh, town and, and, uh, you know, people sort of had a good time. And again, it's, hopefully we can do much more of this because if you can get people involved in downtown, it's gonna have long-term benefits. Uh, during the summer, we had Flash in the Pan Group from Blue Hill, they came up. It was free. Uh, again, it was cash positive because they take donations and they split it with us. So that was a great event for us and, uh, you can see it was kind of a colorful night, so. They, we had an eighties bike ride and a movie, I think the movie was The Goonies, which I kind of remember watching with my kids way back. And, uh, the Bicycle Coalition was here and did a workshop, which that was, again, it was well-attended. There, people were really happy to be in downtown and, uh, doing the things that make a strong community. If we can have the next one. The Art Festival, uh, went again last year, it's going again this year. I think there's a few changes coming, which, uh, may be, uh, sort of new and exciting. It's always good to change it up a little, but some different vendors and, uh, looking forward to that. Uh, Bucksport Connect is sort of the same coffees that we had before, that's going again, where downtown business leaders get together and have a coffee and talk about what's going on. Uh, they did an after-dark, uh, event at the new Bee, Beeport Works, uh, which is the co-work space that's out in Bruce Ashmore's in the, the, uh, what do you call it, the...
Industrial Park.
Yeah, Industrial Park. I mean, I am seventy-four, so. The memories. Uh, they recently had a grand opening for Caleb's Cards and more. My, two of our grandsons were up and went in there and thought it was quite cool and wish we had that in our town, one of them said, so. Welcome home Bucksport, I was on my way there, I was really looking forward to it, but I got called by the Speaker of the House to come, I don't know if it was really the woodshed or just to talk to me about something, so I went. Uh, but I missed it and I heard it was a great event, there were a lot of people there. Uh, I heard you gave a pretty rousing speech, Sue, as you're known to do. But, uh, again, it's the type of thing that builds community and new people were there and, uh, so there'll be more of that coming for sure. Had some sponsors for that, uh, after Thanksgiving, uh, sort of on Small Business Saturday. Derek got together and he went around to merchants and they did a Bucksport Small Business Tree that had over fifteen hundred dollars' worth of things that were donated. And I asked Derek how many entries we had and there were over six hundred. So, and those were picked up in stores in downtown. The beautification committee put together a fundraiser for us, which was a cookbook. And, uh, I have one thing I make and I said I would put it in, but it didn't make it, so. Uh, I'm not much of a cook, but it's, it's sold a lot, it's still selling, it's raised a lot of money for us. If you don't have one, get one. The International Marine Film Festival, we made an association with Gagen Brothers last year and they have a beer called Captain Cool Beer. If you don't know about Molly Cool, you should. She was the first, uh, woman ship captain on the east coast of our country and she lived in Bucksport. So that, we hope to continue with that and they've been supportive and it seemed to fit. And so I think that's gonna be a bigger and better. That event in particular, we were on a real growth curve and then it happened with COVID and it was so difficult to know whether to have it, not have it. Um, was the Alamo gonna be open, was it not gonna be open? But it's, it's often sailing again, I guess what I would say. So, um, that, that has great potential. And again, we did a couple of things, we did a movie, The Perfect Storm, uh, prior to the film festival. And I did go to that and I'd forgotten what a great movie that was. And it was, again, well-attended, a lot of people downtown. And then the next night, they had The Oyster Man in the library and I heard there were people looking in the windows. I couldn't go that night, but it, it really was, again, a great event in, in town. So, well, I guess that's more of the same, The Oyster Man, more of the same. And then, uh, I came up with the idea for this Smoers Lounge, uh, down at the waterfront when we had the Festival of Lights Parade, which... when we had the Festival of Lights Parade, which I think was the longest parade I've ever been to. I mean, it was great. I couldn't believe it. And it was a cold night, but it was fun. And I got to use my insane amount of Christmas decorations and put them on. So it was a good time had by all. But those are just some of the things that we're gonna try to do. I think the organization's got some new life. You know, it was hard to have an organization like that during COVID. And it's hard to get it going again, but I think it's well worth the investment. And I certainly, we all certainly appreciate the support.
Thank you.
And then I want to take one other little thing to invite everybody. The robotics team and the jazz team at the high school have been invited over to the legislature to not only be recognized and congratulated for their achievements, but they're also gonna perform the anthem that day that they're there. So it's kind of a Bucksport day and trying to work with Jim Boothby. We went back and forth a couple of times today to try to set a date. But it will be in May and certainly welcome anybody that wants to come on over and hear me get up and give a speech about Bucksport, which I am thrilled to do, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Any questions? Sorry to take so long, but.
It's all right.
A lot of cool stuff.
I was gonna shut your mic off like the speaker probably does.
Thank you. Next is Wednesdays on Main.
I'm not Paul, but he.
No, you're not.
Paul is on, in her car, driving up from Florida to come back to her home here in Bucksport. They've been gone for lots of months down where they stay. So she asked if I would just be present here. She said, you have all the information. She sent me copies of it all. I think, I would just say, I think she's put together, as she always does, a really stellar, you know, collection of events on Wednesdays in the summer here. And traditionally, they're really wonderful and well-attended. And some of them, like Barcelona on July nineteenth, that's coming back, you know? People that, I think this is the third year maybe that we'll have that. They didn't come last year, but the flamingo dancing, it, it just feels like we're in, Bucksport is New York City, you know, on Broadway. So I don't know if you have questions? The four thousand dollars, the four thousand dollars. She is looking still for another, I think she said fifteen hundred dollars in sponsorships that she'll continue. But for most of the events, events, she has gotten sponsors that don't support the whole cost of the event, but help with those events. Some local sponsors, which is great. And, you know, she does appreciate, and Bucksport appreciates the support of the town, you know, to make this happen on Wednesday night and bring Bucksport alive on those evenings. Hopefully sunny evenings in the summer. Do anything that anyone wondered about or? I think she said sometimes there's money left over and.
We don't have no money left over now.
But you just hold on to it and then this just provides some upfront if she needs to, you know, send groups before the budget goes through, so thank you.
We're the fiscal sponsor for Wednesdays on Main. So when she says extra money, if she gets donations or all of that, it goes into her account with the town or her, Wednesday on Main's account with the town. And the vendors, the groups that she contracts, well, we pay and we take the money and maintain that as a ongoing. And when the council appropriates into it, we just credit that into that account so that it continues to feed this program, which has been going on successfully since two thousand fifteen, fourteen? Yeah, a number of years.
Next is Friends of Port Knox. Is there anybody here for that?
I, I don't think so. He presented, they presented, Rich.
They presented the Economic Development Committee. I'm working on a project actually with Dean, so I probably tired him out.
It's all right.
But they're looking for five thousand for fireworks again. It would be used for the Holiday Lights Parade and then for lighting at the fort.
Any questions? Thank you, Richard.
I think the fireworks at the Holiday Lights Parade, bless, it was a brilliant idea and very well received. We had a lot of positive feedback. I personally was terrified that people, it would be snow and there would be people on the waterfront falling into the water. But fortunately, none of that happened.
Does Main Street Bucksport plan to do that again next year?
We will certainly come up with something.
It was fun.
Yeah.
That, that was great. I thought you were really great.
Next is Bucksport Pride.
Hello, everybody. I asked Ron to stand up for me for Main Street Bucksport because I didn't want to talk too much tonight.
Ron took care of that for you.
Right? He's good at that. Derek Cole with Main Street Bucksport, just here to ask for the second time funding, for funding from, from the town for our festival. We just saw the, the payment for twenty twenty-three hit and excited to, with the approval of the permit, announce that it is happening on June eighteenth. We've already booked a couple of bands, local Maine musicians that are out there trying to do as much music as they can professionally. Also starting to immediately work with local artists and other businesses that we've started to develop relationships with from outside of town, but also in town. Also working with nonprofits who are allowed to table at our event for free. And just looking forward to another great year and hoping that we can kind of get that same support for Bucksport Pride twenty twenty-four. A couple of things I want to mention for those that haven't been to the festival to witness it is, it's just a really amazing community event. And we, we have gotten some feedback, in particular from some area nonprofits. One director of a local nonprofit said that they had been just trying to get in front of a younger demographic because they saw the demographic of their nonprofit with board members and with constituents just aging. And they were trying to get younger people involved. And they just simply said it was the first time that they had been in front of that many young people and really felt positive benefits from being there and tabling. Additionally, you know, we, we did have some downtown businesses, in particular pet provisions down there last year. And we hope to just continue that, continue bringing Bucksport nonprofits and organizations and even businesses out of where they usually do their work and down in front of everybody. Additionally, we plan on continuing activities for all ages, but kind of geared towards some younger folks. We see a lot of children coming with their parents. And right now, we typically do nail painting, we do face painting and other just small activities. But ultimately, the, the main goal isn't just a fun festival. You know, we are a grassroots committee and we've joined together with the intention of promoting the affirmation, dignity, equality, security, visibility and community participation of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersexual and asexual adults and youth and their allies in Bucksport, Maine and the surrounding region. All this fun stuff, it's all about that. Just, again, affirming a segment of our society, of our community that just really needs that affirmation and needs to know that they're welcome and loved where they are. Just want to end it with saying thank you for hearing me at the last meeting and considering bringing us back into the economic budget. I hope that that does work out. And just want to, again, drive home that we, as Bucksport Pride, are just a committee of locals and Health Equity Alliance with their memorandum of understanding have done us a huge favor by holding our money and being the representative of our committee so that we can pull this off. Without them, we really wouldn't be able to. And we are not providing any of their services. I wish they had an office here in Bucksport. They do amazing things, but Bucksport Pride, we, we don't do any of the, the stuff that they do. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm here, but otherwise, thank you very much for the consideration.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
All right. Next item is Sewer.
So. In the land of big numbers, the, the only salary that is reflected in this budget is the staff person in the front office. A portion of her salary, since she does utility billing and tech and sewer liens and all that, is charged to Sewer. And so that salary and employee benefits are those associated with her work. The major increase is under parts and repairs. Superintendent Michio and I discussed the fact that we need to be able to better quantify sort of, if you look at the breakdown at the back of this budget, you'll see that portions of this are different percentages of each kind of cost are portioned to Orland and Verona based on those costs. And so in this coming year's budget, he's going to separate those out so that the, the identification of each type of appear is clearer. But again, the, the cost of those, the, the plant is now in its sixth year of operation. More stuff to fix. Electricity cost is the forty-odd percent increase that, uh, the rate structure increased in January. I did an analysis of all the bills that are associated with the sewer treatment plant and there's more than just the treatment facility itself. The treatment facility itself is being about a hundred and ninety-five thousand kilowatt hours a year at that facility itself are being offset by solar, that, the solar that we own. And, but all of our pump stations are also electric accounts, which are in this. And the big pump stations use significant electricity. But as I said, I, I, I took the heart, the mayor's comments about making sure that the number that we were looking at was a number that was, and so all, I, I'm, unless some, some other thing happens to a pump station that's unforeseen, I think we're pretty close on this, this budget item. Water is up because the cost of water is up. Our, uh, but as I said, the, the big item here is.
What is the sludge site cost? Why is that secret?
Uh, yes.
That, that, that.
If you go, yeah, we've talked about sludge.
Yeah.
And the, we couldn't find the place to take our sludge. And it was piling up, is piling up at the facility that we have up on Upper Long Pond Road. So we've been searching for a location to take sludge. I'll find it eventually.
Eighty-seven, page four.
Yeah, hold on just a second. Here we go. Two hundred and seventy-five tons a year at a hundred and fifty dollars a ton, which took our sludge budget from fifteen thousand dollars for disposal fee to four, um, forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for that same two hundred and seventy-five.
Well, I asked the question that we've budgeted amounts that have been half of what we've budgeted. So are we guessing on the amount of sludge? Do we have to guess on what it is or do we have a pretty good idea of what it is every year? And is it, is that number inflated a little bit?
The initial cost for disposal of the sludge and when it was gonna go and where it was gonna go has been, two things have happened. We've, one, we've generated less than we were budgeting for. And number two, where we have a whole lot stockpiled right now and that hasn't gone anywhere for a good amount of time because there's been no place to take it. But, and, and that, even though, well, before PFAS happened, we had that, we had that situation occurring because the vendor that we had doing the hauling wasn't doing it in a routine. Comparatively speaking, the amount of sludge generated at our facility is minuscule compared to the entities like the city of Bangor, who's, you know, theirs went from four hundred thousand dollars a year to one point two million for disposal of sludge. But we'll certainly track this, but the, if it's, if we have a vendor, they will actually haul when we're clearing it, then we'll get to the two seventy-five and, and, and that is the price per ton that is, is what is required.
No, I was just asking if that number's been normal just by looking at what's been hauled in the past, so.
Okay. Any questions on Sewer?
The, I, just note that the, under the sixty-one, five hundred short-lived asset reserve, that, that's a requirement of our, our USDA funding that we set aside that much annually over the life of the loan in order to fund a replacement.
Sue, where the cost of disposal of the sludge is rising so much, is there ways to fold some of that into Orland and Verona? I see where you said they, they don't contribute towards that or it's not reflected.
Yes, it is. It's, it's.
Oh, I thought, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that one.
A hundred percent of it is, you know, that, what happens is this, there's, these totals that say Orland and Verona indicates what portion of that budget their fee lies to. They have, there's a number at the bottom of those categories and that's their share is, some things they, their share of, of what their total is, is seventy-five percent. Sometimes it's twenty-five percent and sometimes it's zero with there's something that's in the town of Bucksport that, that they have no connection to. Which is why when I was talking, if you look at the parts and materials, there's, there's seventy-five, twenty-five, there's all these things. And the director and I have talked about the fact that we need to better hone in on what exactly is pump maintenance and what pumps are we talking about?
Okay.
All right, next is capital improvement. Make sure you have a big sheet of paper as.
Yes, we do.
See if you start drawing it.
Well, there's actually three pieces of paper.
Three pieces.
It, well, two and then one little tiny blip at the bottom. And what this is, is, is a snapshot of June thirtieth of twenty-two, what got appropriated in twenty-three, what we've spent thus far, what we're looking at a budget for next year. And then under proposed expenditures, it, you said, see below. You'll see a list of the items that have been, down at the bottom, that have been identified by department heads that, for what they would like to do. It, I'm not, if you see that minus two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, I, I've taken that out of the pool. That is what was expended for the rehab of the pool and that's why that zero, we used what was in that account plus fund balance to pay for the pool. That's why I said, um, but under police, there is, um, the cruisers and equipment, ballistic vests, computers that are necessary and a repeater for the cruiser, dispatch, a TV monitor, public safety building. Um, dispatch, a TV monitor, public safety building, um, the kitchen re- renovations, which would be materials purchased by us and work done by the crews in order to rehab the kitchen, which is not in any kind of good shape. But then the hose tower, brickwork on the hose tower and repainting the chimney are things that have been identified in the past that have not yet been completed. Um, the town garage is, um, replacement of two rear doors out of that, those funds. Highway equipment, the sidewalk plow is there, we bought it in twenty twenty-one, but we have not yet paid for it because we don't have it yet. And so that's why that's there. And then the payments on truck soda and the street sweeper that we purchased, that, the, that's the remainder of that total.
So we're about to have two of the sidewalk plows that we've, the type that we use now? We're about to have two of them?
We have one that's gonna be four or five years old.
At least, but yeah, we'll have two.
Okay. Yep. Those are a lot better than the old ones, those they create. Yeah.
They're the, they're our Swiss Army knife. We use it very.
Yeah.
Uh, it, we also use that, um, for the road edger that we do, um, with that. Um, town office, repainting the interior, that project has started. Um, it won't be, um, probably completed until hopefully before July, but we'll see. And then the chimney needs to be repaired. The chimney in the, this building has got no cap and it's got issues with kicking down through the sides. And this is, would be where you would, we would look at doing some of the things that a court officer has n- has identified in terms of the water saving, um, things and those things. The fire department, um, it's fire gear, uh, a mobile repeater and, uh, replacement computers. Um, the ambulance is two video, I'm not gonna pronounce that word at this time of night. I won't get it right, laryngoscopes?
Yeah.
Okay, until, okay. Um, there is, we still don't have the new ambulance that was purchased almost two years ago. And there was a request from, uh, staff to approve another ambulance, knowing that it's gonna be, um, the delivery would not be until the following year in twenty-five because of the lead times that are necessary in order to build these. Um, is the one, is the ambulance that was out of service back in service? Okay. Um, and then.
So, so there's not a new ambulance, there's not money set in this budget for a new ambulance?
No. No, there is not.
Okay.
The, um, and then the school street firehouse is in the capital improvement budget for windows siding and sheathing, but that, our facility houses all of the antique fire equipment that's owned by the department and it's, we may be issuing ourselves a citation for the way that we're building this only because it's in a not great condition. It needs siding and, um, attention. So that's in there from that. And then stuff that's not in here is tennis court reconstruction. That cost is estimated at over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, Mr. Otella has been working on that in terms of what grant funding might be available, et cetera. Um, the baseball field wall is still in an interim phase. That's not on here. Waterfront walkway repairs, we had, uh, an overview, an engineering review of our waterfront walkway to see what needed to happen. Um, there is, uh, nothing identified specifically, but I've included forty thousand dollars as an appropriation this year to begin repairs if the council identifies, which the ones that would like to. And then the skating rink building needs, um, some work if it's going to be. We had talked at one point about, uh, moving the fitness facility out of the Stewart School so that it wasn't sis- it wasn't, its hours were not curtailed as they are now because they, they can't, because of access, uh, uncontrolled access to the school while kids are there for people that are, a security issue. They were, that were raised and so that facility doesn't operate when, and there was a discussion at one time about the, about improving that building to perhaps locate the fitness facility. So those are all things that were identified but are not included as funded options in this. Um, that is.
Any questions? All right.
We do not have revenues on this sheet. Our recessor is still crunching numbers. We hope to have by next, bec- I do know that, that our, our sales ratio, the, the difference between what the state says we're valued at and what our values show we are is a big gap now. It, it started in twenty twenty, it peaked in twenty twenty-one and virtually everyone, I shouldn't say everyone because maybe some didn't, but all the learned people that I spoke with indicated that it, it would be a curve and it would be returning to a more normalized and that is not happening. There's no normalization of, of, we're not gonna go back to homes in Bucksport selling for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. That is not where we're at.
Not likely.
And so our values are out of whack and that impacts homestead exemption. We're gonna be at eighty-seven percent this year, um, in order of what we're allowed to give for the homestead exemption because our values are, were two years ago, eighty-seven percent of, of, they were lower than that, but we get five percent, seventy.
Seventy-five, seventy-five percent, and I can up it by nine percent for the state. Um, so we can go up to eighty-seven percent because of that.
How far behind are, are our evaluations?
Um, so I just had my annual audit and for next year, we're looking at being at a sixty-three. Um, so what I'm doing now is when I made the presentation of updating all of the properties, um, cause typically what you could do is go in and change the cost schedules and you could adjust it that way. We couldn't do that because of the way they were entered previously. Um, so I'm going in and updating all of them by hand. And then I'm working with somebody who turns out is working with many towns this year to do the same task for updating cost schedules. Um, and then next year I'll be able to apply to the state and have them review the updates that I've made and hopefully we can get back up higher than that sixty-three percent. Um, but it's a whole big long process because I have to get re-audited essentially.
So sixty-three percent is we're sixty-three percent accurate?
Yeah. We're, we're, we're assessing at sixty-three percent of a hundred percent.
Okay.
Um, so we only get sixty-three percent of the exemptions because the state isn't gonna reimburse us for a hundred percent if we're only taxing folks at sixty-three percent of their total value.
And, uh, it's, there's no consolation in the fact that everyone's in the same boat. That, and it, the unfortunate reality is that the, the state is making no accommodations for the fact that, that everyone's in the same boat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, they're still applying there. This is what we say you are, catch up. And that, we've been chasing this car which is going way faster than.
Yeah, and now revaluation companies, um, there's a lot of towns that have to do full blown revaluations. Um, they're contracting out four plus years now. Um, so we are better off in that sense. But the, um, gentleman who's gonna be helping me with the cost schedules, he's doing it with so many towns before they commit that he's trying his best. I chatted with him today and we're gonna hopefully try to get something in the next couple of weeks rolled out. Um, but we'll see.
So we're a couple of years out from any sort of accurate correction.
No, hopefully next year, we should, um, if we had to do a full blown revaluation. But hopefully next year I'll be able to get the state to come in and audit again for this current year. Cause the way that it works is the state gives you a number based on last year's numbers. Um, so technically where we are right now is we're in the twenty twenty-two year where we're getting our percent good from. Um, so we're really in the thick of the COVID sales now, um, and really eating it. So we're hoping to get back up to where we need to be, but it's.
Cause our cost schedules are such that, that, um, which is what, based on replacement costs for whatever you're gonna do in, in that, that you could construct a, a two-bedroom, two-bath home for.
I think it's like eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's really, really low, so.
I mean, those are the cost schedules that are built into the system and they, that, updating those will correct our.
Yeah.
And before everyone has a heart attack, that, that increases taxes, but it, it generally corresponds with a reduction in.
And the mill rate, yeah. Yeah.
So, but that's what's necessary in order to, to be more accurate and avoid.
Well, and we can only be so low for so long before we start losing revenue sharing as well. So it's important to do it right, so.
This is just what all of them went through when everyone saw their evaluations skyrocket, but with the mill rate, their taxes did increase something if in fact went down, so.
Yeah.
D R L went through the same thing because they, they were way overdue too. During the county budget last fall, that was a big conversation. Every town in this county is in the exact, well, not the exact same boat from, from us, how far out we were looking. But in terms of property values, et cetera, none of them have started to come back down.
Yeah. Yeah, so in terms of where everybody else is, we're not, we're not the worst off. We'll be able to get where we need to be in a relatively timely manner, but, um, we unfortunately won't see that for this commitment.
Do we have any idea of if the school budget will be read next meeting?
Um, I believe that's what is on the agenda and, uh.
Yeah. When you look at our budget, not having that big, big number there is not a lot of help when we're trying to figure out where we stand.
Mm-hmm. Wait, and it, next week's is, is your PowerPoint that identifies, you know, I, I, I do have some idea of the, uh, I'm in hopes that cost schedules can, or at least we can have enough, I, I believe that, um, uh.
Payman had said that.
Cause in this case right now, we're looking, we're looking at a nine percent increase thereabouts when we figuring if the school budget is on par with where they're at.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so what I would ask folks to, everybody's been taking notes and looking at things on the budget. Um, if we're comfortable with what we've talked about, um, next week is the meeting to decide what we go forward with the budget. So.
That, you'll, you'll talk about on the four, what you want in it and on the eleven.
Right.
You'll get whatever you said in it and you'll either aye or nay, send that to public hearing for the first meeting.
Correct, but I want next week to make sure that everybody is ready to make those announcements for the eleventh, whatever they're comfortable with.
Yeah.
But to the mayor's point, it would be nice to have the school, the school.
Oh, I, I, they, he has, he has.
Yeah, not that you can do that, I'm just, I.
I'm fixing Susan.
I mean, I can go.
He does have numbers and he will be, I, I do know that they are, are, have been whittling things down, so.
Any questions? Lot of information, a lot of stuff to, to go over and think about. I want to thank everybody for their presentations, um, throughout the last month. Lot of, lot of requests, a lot of trying to do things right for the town. So, um, we'll look at everything and make hopefully good decisions and keep things somewhat close, so. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment?
Second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
And I do have some.